No, remember he's on that passport thing with church. He left yesterday afternoon.
We don't have our thingies on fishers. Lisa hadn't forgotten about us. That's all right.
We'll get started in about one minute. The July 8, 2019 meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called to order. We welcome everybody to the meeting today. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today we have three items to consider for which there will be a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the case may do so at their time. After the public hearing, commission members may have questions for staff and for those who have spoken for or against a request to change. The Planning Commission will review the case relative to the city code and make a recommendation to forward to city council that will consider this as their August 6 meeting. So we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Dotson.
Present.
Mr. Garrison.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Patrick.
Here.
And Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Okay, the first item is a special use permit application, PLSUP 2019-0000240, filed by Bridge Street Lofts LLC on behalf of 401 Bridge Street LLC requesting a special use permit for residential uses in a structure with a non-residential use on the first floor and waiver of density requirements in accordance with Article 3L, Section C, Items 9 and 13 of Chapter 41 of the Code of City of Danville, Virginia, as amended. And at 401 Bridge Street, the applicant is proposing to develop 52 residential units with first-floor commercial space and a waiver of all density and parking requirements. If we could have a staff report, please.
Bridge Street Lofts LLC, the applicant, is proposing to redevelop a vacant building at 401 Bridge Street. The first floor will contain commercial space. Multifamily residential dwellings will be on all floors. The property is located in the TWC Tobacco Warehouse Commercial District. A special use permit is required to allow residential uses with first-floor commercial uses in this district. A special use permit may also be granted to waive the density requirement of 24 dwellings per acre and allow the requested 52 units on approximately half acre of land. In the TWC District, parking is not required for commercial uses with 20,000 square feet or less. As part of the special use permit, the applicant wishes this parking waiver to be intact for all onsite uses. The site was originally developed as a downtown storage warehouse. Records suggest the property has not been in use for several years. The most recent activity was in 2014 when the current property owner obtained building permits for redevelopment. However, the permits have since been voided due to inactivity. The request is similar to previous requests for mixed-use developments in the River District. There have yet to be any negative impacts from the mixed-use developments, even though they have each required a special use permit without related conditions. The only conditions for the permits have been to address density and potential impacts from unrequired parking, which may be requested separately. Seven notifications were sent out to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. None of them returned statements stating opposed or not opposed to the request. Planning staff recommends the City Planning Commission recommend approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2019-0000240, filed by Bridge Street Lofts LLC, requesting a special use permit for residential uses in a structure with non-residential use on the first floor and a waiver of density requirements, subject to the following conditions. One, there shall be no more than 55 multifamily residential units. And two, there shall be bike parking sufficient for a total of six bicycles, preferably covered. This would allow mixed-use development at 401 Bridge Street. The density cap is to prevent unlimited density but also permit some flexibility in the requested number of units. Bicycle parking is to help offset the waived parking requirement and deal with increased multimodal transportation demand associated with downtown revitalization. Additionally, staff recommend that Planning Commission consider amending the zoning ordinance during a work session. The amendment could address switching mixed-use development to be by right rather than by special use permit in the downtown districts.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing. If anyone wished to speak in favor of this request can come forward.
My name is David Zook. I own 417 Bridge Street, which is adjacent to the property in question. I also own 110 Newton Street, which is adjacent to this property. In addition, I have an operating company in 417 Bridge Street with about 35 employees currently. I am not opposed to this development, subject to two things. One is that I have a legal easement through my Z Properties 417 Bridge property for fire escape access through that building as well as for mutual use of a courtyard that our two buildings, our three buildings surround. And we, I'm already in discussions with the developer about resolving how that will be pursued and for both of our benefits. The second thing I'd like to make a point of, though, is that parking in that area is already becoming a problem. And I would recommend highly that the city make a specific game plan for how it's going to address the parking problem as part of approving this development, rather than waiting for it to get worse and worse. The Acry lot, as well as the lot behind Newton's Landing lot, are both about 90% full if you look at the space that's directly behind my property and the subject property. And this is including the fact that there is a, currently, as I understand, an option that the owners of the Spectrum Medical facility have for being able to purchase and make that Acry lot a private lot, which would exacerbate the problem. But with that, and if you combine that with the fact that my business is, if I were to develop them out as commercial properties for office space use, would generate about 600 additional cars that would need to be parked in those lots. And there's currently no space to do that. Thank you.
Well, any questions, call him when he's up here.
I, this is probably more of a question for staff. I didn't realize parking was an issue down there. You say there's 90%?
Well, on a recent afternoon, I just drove through Acry as well as directly behind the 110 Newton and 401 Bridge properties on Newton Landing, and they were both about 90% full. There's maybe 10 or 12 spaces available in each of those locations.
Is there any truth to this, about Spectrum taking over Acry?
I don't know about Spectrum taking over Acry, but I do know that the city is aware that there is less parking than in the past as downtown has continued to redevelop. And the city has put out an RFP for a consultant to reexamine the parking, similar to what was done a couple of years ago. And as well as one of the benefits of mixed-use developments is that parking demand is kind of staggered throughout the day. With these being residential units, people are more likely to be home at, during the evening, as opposed to during the day with commercial uses.
One other question while you're up here, I was going to ask you, I didn't quite understand what you were saying about the little atrium area. Is that, that's something that you and the neighbor?
What, what has been developed between myself and the previous couple owners back of the 401 Bridge property was that I was granted an easement into that building for fire escape exit access, as well as we divided a courtyard. There's a courtyard in the center that is about maybe 40 feet by 40 feet. And we each own 50% of the land and we, we have mutual access rights for 100% of it. So what we are in discussions now is trying to solidify in a written agreement how that courtyard would be developed and used by the parties, the three legal parties that surround that space.
So you are talking to them?
Yeah, we're already in discussions and verbally, we're very, very close to something that will work for all of us. And I think we're going to memorialize that in an update to the easement, so.
Okay, good. Okay, well, thank you.
Dave, who owns the lots behind those?
Newton's Landing is a public lot. So the portion that's directly behind 110 Newton and 401 Bridge is what's relatively full. Now, if you go and move downward, which direction would that be? That would be east. It starts to lighten up and there's more spaces down that area. But most of the development is, I mean, most of the car usage is directly behind 110 Newton. And part of that, that problem is there's an awful lot of employees of Spectrum Medical that park behind 110 Newton. And then they walk a block to that facility, which has caused some of my employees to have to park in Acry and walk a block the other direction. So people aren't parked, they are not parking closest to where they work. I don't know whether that's because there's a shortage perceived by...
Well, they could, I'm just guessing, it could be that people work there, maybe park in farther away to allow the customers and people to park closer.
But, but it just suggests there's a shortage of parking from all perspectives.
Yeah, right, sure.
And I, and so I, I'm trying to market the rest of my building for development. I've got at least 30,000 square feet in the 417 Bridge that has not been developed, nor has 16,000 square feet in the Newton facility been developed. If those were put into office space usage, it's easily 500 to 600 cars, based on the density that I have. And I can move to in terms of employee count on one floor and a half finished off.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Telly Tucker, Director of Economic Development for the City of Danville. Just wanted to clarify a couple of questions that were raised during the last speaker. The Spectrum Medical Group, actually RDD LLC, the group of investors that have redeveloped the Danville Research Building into what is now Spectrum Medical and Sova Hill, do have a purchase option on the Acry's warehouse. It has been, I think that's a 10-year option and it has to remain free and public parking for a period of time due to some of the grant funding we received from the state to redevelop that property. Additionally, the city does own Newton's Landing, which is 400 parking spaces. I will reiterate what Bryce has shared as well. The proposed reuse for this project is residential in nature, which typically occupy the building after 5:00 PM and then do not occupy those spaces during the day. And so in an effort to maximize the usage of the existing parking that's there, there, the parking lot's quite empty in the evenings and overnight. And so we believe the Office of Economic Development is supportive of this request in the sense that it would allow us to maximize the investment that has already been made by the city and so that this parking can be used around the clock. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Tucker? Is there any other options down the road for additional parking?
Yes, probably about six years ago, the city participated in a, in a River District parking plan. It identified three locations for future parking as the need arises. Who would have ever thought the day that downtown Danville would have a parking issue, which we're excited about, it's a problem to have, but it shows that there's interest in the market. And certainly the, the rates at which residents are moving back into the district suggest that the redevelopment, urban redevelopment of Danville's River District is, is a positive thing. There are numerous plans for parking structures. I think the city would entertain building those as they are needed at this point in time. As Bryce mentioned, there is an active RFP out to look at both publicly owned and privately owned parking in the district and then to make some recommendations on how we manage that to make sure that we take, we use the capacity that we have before we justify spending taxpayer dollars on building a new structure. So we are proactively expecting those, those proposals to come back in by the end of the month. And then the consultant will then move forward with a River District parking study as well and provide some recommendations to city staff on how to manage that, both public and private, to the benefit of the community.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Yes, how are you all? My name is Garrett Schifflit. I'm one of the developers of the property. And I don't have a ton to add at this point unless anybody has questions, but Mr. Zook and Ross and myself are discussing our, our options and we're coming to terms on that. I guess with the parking, it, Newton's Landing does, it said 400 spaces, isn't it? So I have noticed that on either end of the lot, where behind the properties we've developed previously and towards, behind 401, there are a greater number of cars, but the center of the parking lot still is, I want to say wide open, but there's still a lot of spaces left in that, so somebody could park 50, 100 yards further down and still get to the buildings. So I just wanted to just introduce myself. Many of you know me, but, and say that we are working with Mr. Zook on that and then the parking as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing. Discussion with the...
I have a question for staff. This, using one building as a fire escape from another building, is that a violation of fire code?
I don't have anything to add.
Now, you can use, according to the building code, you can share buildings. We have downtown, as I say, multiple buildings that have access between them. As long as there's access easements between, it is possible. Now, the structure itself will have to be modified to allow, you know, fire escape per se and then fire-rated corridors and doorways and everything else, but it is possible in buildings that are built to property lines like that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we kind of be assured, some kind of way, that when the fire exits and stuff are worked out, I guess through permitting or whatever for him, that Mr. Zook has accounted for, he don't want to be left kind of locked in with no way to use it, I guess?
It'll have to be accounted for, for the building permits. And we do have a record of that easement as well. We're working with them.
Yes, sir. So while we're working on the plans, we don't have approval on the plan yet, obviously. They're still being drawn. But we do have a passage for both of those fire routes to go into a common stairwell in our building that will allow egress from his space through our space to safety.
Okay, thank you.
And the fire chief would have to sign off on that, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not the chief, but the fire inspector who does the planning.
Well, inspectors, yeah. Fire department would have to sign off.
Did you have any problem with the two conditions put in by staff?
Which conditions are those, I'm sorry?
Uh, one of them is about the bike parking and the other about how many units you can have.
I don't know that I saw those conditions. I don't, I...
It just said there'd be no more than 55 multifamily units.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
And then the other thing that you'd have a total of six bicycle parking.
Correct, yes, I'm sorry. No, no issues with that at all. Yes, sorry. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners or a motion?
Question here.
Yes.
About parking down there, is there efficient lighting? Is the security ever drive through that? Is that policed by the city police or...?
It's public lands, there's lighting and then, of course, police presence for there somewhere to the rest of downtown.
Good lighting?
Yeah, there's lighting now.
I recommend approval of special use permit, PLSUP 2019-000240, subject to conditions by staff.
Okay, second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Garrison.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Patrick.
Yes.
Mr. Bolton.
Yes.
And Mr. Dotson.
Yes.
Okay, we have, if you look on your notes, that we have also an optional to request a work session. Do you want to take that up at this time and go and try to schedule something or you want to...
Well, tentatively, right now, we have a work session scheduled for next month, I believe. Has that been canceled?
I think it was canceled.
Correct, yeah, that's correct.
It's canceled.
No, the, that was for this month, it was canceled. We have the one for August.
A work session?
Yeah.
For August the 5th, right?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay. So can we just bring this up?
This is something that we could...
You could do this then. If you want, you can do it another time, it's up to you guys. We just wanted to raise this to your attention.
Okay, but I mean, is this something that we could just bring into it or we have to vote on here or...?
You need to vote on it.
I move we add that to our work session for August the 2nd.
Okay.
Second.
Notion is second and roll call. You do, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next is a request to amend Chapter 41 entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of City of Danville 1986, well specifically Article 31 titled TOC, Traditional Office, Section C, entitled uses permitted by special use permit by adding Item 24 for hotels and motels. And then along after that, we'll do the special use permit application, PLSUP 2019-0000241, filed by Mid-Atlantic Prospects LLC requesting a special use permit for a hotel in accordance with Article 31, Section C, Item 24, Chapter 41, Code of City of Danville, as amended at 990 Main Street and 108 Holbrook Street. The applicant is seeking to redevelop existing office buildings into a boutique hotel site. So we got a staff report, please.
The applicant is proposing to redevelop two medical office buildings into a hotel at 990 Main Street and 108 Holbrook Street. As proposed, the hotel will contain up to 40 suites. This use is currently not permitted in the TOC Transitional Office District, in which the properties are located. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to allow hotels by special use permit in this zoning district. The applicant is also requesting a special use permit for the development. The zoning ordinance currently defines hotels and motels as follows. A building or portion thereof, or a group of buildings, which provides sleeping accommodations in six or more separate units, or rooms for transients on a daily, weekly, or similar short-term basis, for reasonable monetary compensation, whether such establishment is designated as a hotel, inn, automobile court, motel, motor lodge, tourist cabin, tourist court, tourist home, or otherwise. A court or, or, a hotel, a hotel or motel shall be deemed to include any establishment which provides residential living accommodations for transients on a short-term basis, such as an apartment hotel, but not to include a homeless shelter. Hotels and motels are currently permitted by right in most commercial districts and most industrial districts. The use is not permitted in any residential district, the NC Neighborhood Commercial District, the TOC Transitional Office District, or the LEDI Light Economic Development Industrial District. Hotels and motels are required to provide one parking space per rental unit, one space per employee on shift, and any additional parking as needed for other onsite uses. The Danville 2030 Comprehensive Plan contains a goal of promoting heritage tourism, such as related to the historic district in which the subject parcels are located. Although there are local hotel options, a preliminary study for the city's Department of Economic Development indicates that there are insufficient short-term rental options in the city. Additional hotels may be needed to meet current and future demand for tourists and other visitors. Thirty-five notifications were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Thirteen of those property owners responded. Six stated that they are not opposed. Five stated that they are opposed. Two mailed in responses, but only to provide comments without stating whether or not opposed. For a recommendation, staff, planning staff recommend the City Planning Commission recommend approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to Article 3I entitled TOC Transitional Office, Section C entitled uses permitted by special use permit by adding Item 24 for hotels and motels. The amendment will read as follows. Article 3I TOC Transitional Office, C, uses permitted by special use permit, 24, hotel slash motel. The code amendment would allow hotels and motels by special use permit in the TOC Transitional Office Commercial District. The use of a special use permit will allow the use to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Associated conditions should aim to maintain the district's purpose as a transitional district between residential and commercial districts. Planning staff likewise recommend the commission recommend approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2019-0000241, filed by Mid-Atlantic Prospects LLC requesting a special use permit for a hotel in accordance with Article 3I, Section C, Item 24 of Chapter 41 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, subject to the following conditions. One, the property owner or applicant shall restructure the existing parking to comply with current parking regulations specifically regarding landscaping, buffers, and trees. And two, guest occupancy shall be limited to a maximum total of 45 rental units for both properties combined. The special use permit would allow for the properties to be redeveloped into a hotel. The recommended conditions for bringing the parking into compliance match the applicant's conceptual plans and place a reasonable density limit on the use.
Okay, thank you very much. And like normal, we'll, we'll vote on the code change first and then we'll vote on the specific use. So we have two votes. I'll open the public hearing. As for, I see the applicants here, I want the applicant to come and present his case and probably hopefully answer any questions that'll be coming.
My name is Ed Walker. While I'm a resident of Roanoke, Virginia, I'm also a resident of 333 West Main Street in Danville and probably spend a couple nights a week here and have for, for some time. And it's been, it's been a great experience all around. I'm one of your growing cadre of people around the state that are really excited to be investing here and celebrating all that Danville has to offer. I'll try to make this as brief as I can, but it's, it requires a little bit of information to give you a sense of what we want to do and why we think it's a, it's a good idea. to give you a sense of what we want to do and why we think it's a, it's a good idea. First, I want to thank the commissioners for being here and I want to thank the professional staff for what they do to get these files prepared and in front of you. And I also want to acknowledge, we, I've had a lot of meetings. My style with this sort of redevelopment work, and you're going to learn some, something about it, you probably know a lot about it, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we approach it, which is a very community-oriented redevelopment. It's, it's a little different than most. And when we do that, we're very, very interested in the critics of anything that we want to do because very often, almost always, the comments and observations and concerns are understandable and very often, the folks that are worried have excellent points to make. And that's certainly been no exception. And, and I, I don't have a problem with folks that just see it differently or disagree, and you'll hear from some of them later. We provided some opportunities for dialogue with them and had great conversations. I've shared all my talking points with them. I haven't tried to hide the ball in any way. It's just sort of the, the way that we do it. But you'll hear from some of them and I want to thank them for helping us to think through this in a more detailed way. Part of what's important to understand is this idea, if I were you all and somebody's talking about a hotel on, on Main Street across from Sutherland, that, that would just sort of make me a little edgy. And if you were talking to someone who was, you know, a motel six or a Comfort Inn developer and does five of these a year, you'd have a lot to be nervous about. I'm really the opposite of that and I want to give you a sense of sort of what we're going to do during this, this sort of short, short presentation. I want to explain to you a little bit about the work that we've done, a little bit about what we'd like to do. And I want us all to think about it because it's the way I approach my work about sort of what's best for everybody. I think it's a good basis. And Old West End, as a neighborhood group, is a very, very, very important constituency. And there are others. Danville is a municipality that is in the midst of a really interesting and important revitalization of its own and it's working. I think I'm, I may be some kind of proof of that. I've got opportunities and invitations from municipalities all the time to come work in them and for a lot of reasons, some, some personal and some professional, I've chosen to, 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 to be here. So Old West End is important. The municipality is important. I'm a big fan of, of Avery University and its significance to Danville's revitalization story and the hospital. You hear the refrain all the time in placemaking and how communities like Danville all over the United States are redeveloping themselves and the shorthand is meds and eds, by which they're not talking about me, I wish they were. They're talking about educational institutions and medical institutions. And, and as an interesting sidebar, the reason they're so durable and so powerful is there aren't any shareholders that sell the business and it gets moved. They are unbelievable economic engines and they're, they're real durable. So, you know, Avery's important, the hospital's important, there are lots and lots of important constituencies to consider. So what I want to do is just briefly give you a sense, I have not appeared on my behalf before, before you in, in the past, and I just want to give you a, a sense of the work that we do. What's the easiest way to get, get this started? So, so what I want to do is, yeah, so what I want to do is show you briefly some of the sort of work we've done and the kind of quality standards that we're interested in. Mid-century medical buildings aren't everybody's love. It's not a lot of people's idea of awesome architecture. I happen to like it. I think it's pretty neat. And when I first came to Danville and was working on the, been working on the B, this building really appealed to me in a lot of ways. And you'll see in a moment some that we've done before. So we're going to talk a lot about placemaking and vibrancy. And when we talk about a boutique hotel, it, there is no definition of that, just like there's no definition of house and there's no definition of manufacturing facility. It represents a general idea. What's really important in these situations is to look at the particular definition in the particular place in the context. So there are a lot of characteristics in Charleston, South Carolina, in historic, you know, arguably the, well, as historic a neighborhood as there is anywhere, there are small hotels and inns like this. The same is true in Old Town Alexandria, Boston. It's a long list. So, so there's no reason in and of itself not to have a small hotel in a historic neighborhood. Among the other sorts of things to think about, when you're thinking about a, the way we interpret what boutique hotel means to us, because when you read the definitions of projects, they all mean different things. So to us, it's sort of, or to me, it's a high level of architectural and landscaping design whereby the property becomes quieter, safer, more beautiful, gently more vital, by which I mean, you know, not slamming doors and people raising hell in the parking lot and, you know, some sort of extended stay thing, and I don't want to beat up on the Astoria, but that's not what we've got in mind. What we have in mind is the nicest hotel accommodations in terms of finish that there is in the market. And if you're familiar with other small hotels, a classic example that hadn't occurred to me, the, the Georges in downtown Lexington that the Gottwald family did is at the main intersection and a wonderful little hotel in Quirk and Richmond and their others. So sort of very high-end furniture fixtures and equipment. Individually, individuality and character are extremely important. So this concept is branded and decorated to celebrate what's best about Danville and the Old West End. In terms of its past, its present, and its future, I think all of us are really excited about where we're headed and you've got some traction. It's really starting to happen and we want to continue that in whatever sensitive way that we can. We want to emphasize the community's history, arts, culture, and economy. We want to inspire confidence and momentum in the Old West End to helpfully spur more neighborhood investment. One of the things that I applaud the Old West End Neighborhood Association most on is what an effective job they've done at finding investors for particular properties. It is real hard to do and they've gotten some buyers into some buildings and are really fixing it up and making great progress. And so we believe that having this property would help that. We want unobtrusive, sustainable, and highly curated guest management, giving them local experiences, perspective, and engagement. So it's not, it's not your typical, you know, sort of Hampton Inn, you got your key, you go, you know, what we want them to do is come, go to the Carrington Pavilion, go to Sutherland, go across the street to Crema and Vine, walk, you know, go on sightseeing tours, really be a part of the, a part of the community because I feel like Danville's got a lot to crow about. And I would love frankly to change some of the stereotypes that some people who don't know this community better. I'd like to change some of those stereotypes. And what's the nicest way to do that? It's true in all of our lives. It's by showing hospitality. I mean, plain and simple. And I can tell you as somebody who came to Danville to court, you know, going down to Ballard and going on, you know, a great date and having fun and this and that, and then heading out to the, you know, Courtyard Marriott on Fifty-Eight West, that's not awesome. And we got all these great things downtown and in the Old West End and the B's going to help a little bit. That's really about the River District, but we'd like to get into position to be more helpful to the Old West End and the hospital and Avery, et cetera. It's a relatively small number of units and they're all suites. Boutique hotels are all, are often not part of a national chain and we certainly have zero interest in that. What we've learned is that we have to manage these things in order for them to be managed well so that the guests can really get connected to the community. And then lastly, interestingly and, and sort of counterintuitively, hotels are the least intensive use in terms of total traffic count and noise. And that's sort of counterintuitive, I think, and, and not to belabor it because some of this stuff is, is really academically interesting to me and I can go on about it more than I should, but apartments are literally, appraisers appraise apartments at ninety-five percent occupancy. And they are, and I've got a lot of apartment projects and they all stay somewhere between ninety-five and in the case of the Patrick Henry, most recently, ninety-nine point seven five percent occupy. Office buildings come with support staff. For example, for every doctor, there's an average of four support staff for each physician. And so in a, in a medical office building or a law office or anything else, you have tons and tons and tons more automobiles than you do either with apartments or, or with hotels. Apartments, if you imagine in this building, if it was an apartment building, you would have at any given time forty of the units occupied. Well, a hotel is doing well, in our experience, conservatively to be occupied sixty, sixty-five percent of the time. And most of those guests are usually in one car. And so apartment dwellers are often couples or friends or whatever and they're two cars. And so that's an important thing to, to think about. All right. So let's take a quick run through this. I've been doing this work for, for eighteen years and doing it a little differently. And this is part that makes me a little uncomfortable. If you're curious about my reputation or track record or sort of person quality, whatever, there's actually a fair bit of that on, on the internet. And so you can Google me or whatever. And I've received a number, many historic preservation awards and embarrassingly, and I told them they got it wrong, but Roanoke made me their citizen of the year several years ago and stuff like that. And so I, I'm embarrassed to say that, but I think it's important for you to have a sense of the sort of community commitment and citizenship. I, I take that very seriously in this work. And to be candid, I, I stopped, the, the financial part of this is not the reason to do it. It's just the way I like to spend my, my time. So let's go through this very quickly. This is the old Patrick Henry Hotel in Roanoke, just like the Doctors' Building. It had fallen on hard times. There was a hole in the roof of the Patrick Henry about half the size of this room. And it was thought to be irretrievable. And we went to work on it. We love a tough, a tough case. This was a twenty-five million dollar project. It was about to be torn down. I showed this to you because this is a good example of finish level of what we would like to see in the hotel rooms at, at Doctors'. This is the dining room at the Patrick Henry, which was great. You know, that thing loses Jiminy Cricket. Phew. On a good year, the ballroom loses twenty-five thousand dollars a year, I would say. But we, we continue to run it. We think it's an important part of the building's history. This is the lobby. Before I bought the building, I looked, looked up TripAdvisor and the last comment I saw said was, if you liked The Shining, you'll love the Patrick Henry. And so it did not look this way before we took it over, but it looks that way today. This is another mid-century hard-to-love medical office building. This is the Roanoke, the former Roanoke Health Department. And it could not find anybody to love on it at all. And it had real interesting history. I teach at Washington and Lee's Law School and my students worked on a terrific, made terrific contributions to the nomination form and got it listed with the National Register of Historic Buildings. And this is very similar and this is an important place to note. So the, the great way to think about this, about the Doctors' Building, is sort of as it is now, as we propose to do it. And then third is just the unknown. And the unknown in this situation is actually really important because once somebody owns a building and controls it, and I don't have to, you, you all know hundreds of examples here. I can think of a couple. The classic Methodist church and there are others. When key iconic buildings get into the wrong hands, they go nowhere and they quickly begin to, to deteriorate. So that's what was going on here for sure. And then this was sort of as we were making, making progress. And so we've got it. It's now called West End Flats. I think it's twenty-two units and we took the old auditorium. There's the entrance to it. You can see the green tile from its days as a health clinic. This is one of the units in there, again, a high level of finish that we would expect at least this nice. There won't be anything in my portfolio that will be any better equipped in terms of furniture, fixtures, and equipment than the Doctors' Building. This is a most recent small hotel project. So this is very similar. It's called Salem Motor Lofts. It was formerly a, a garage, a car garage. And Salem's an awesome, if you haven't been, just one of the great small cities in the state of Virginia, great Main Street community. This is on it. This is one of the restaurants that's in there now. This is sort of a back terrace. This is a restaurant in the front. And this is one of the units. So it's obviously more rustic. We wanted to keep the garage parts of it, but this is the sort of finish level that we would expect. I've never done a project that I'm not proud of. I certainly have no intention of starting at this point in my career. Here's some more shots from that project. It's a real fun one. So it's a great time to, to sort of look at Doctors'. And again, this probably isn't your cup of tea. So here's Chambers Street, the historic sort of drop-off point. There's this very important and sensitive moment to the neighbors on the other side of Chambers. As you can see on any given day, I think because of Midtown, you know, there's a, in the Doctors' offices, there's always a fair bit, a fair bit going on. But what we'd like to do is come away from this. We always want things to be better, more beautiful, quieter, safer. And I would add, you know, the vitality and, and economics in addition to aesthetics. And by economics, I mean, and this is really important for the community and the municipality as a stakeholder, the lodging tax is no joke. I mean, it's seven percent, I think, and it all stays local. It's not like some of the taxes where a bunch of the money goes to Richmond. So what's nice about this is this thing's really earning money for the municipality. Apartment buildings, I mean, they do, they're important. I mean, God knows, I've done a ton of them. And office buildings do, but they don't in that direct way. It's not as much of an annuity. So here's the, here's the unpleasant truth. It's, it's just real unattractive parcel. And it's a sea of asphalt, you know. Can this get worse? Sure. Is it likely to get worse if, you know, if we can't do our thing and we've got to sell it or put it on the market or whatever? I'm going to argue that simply not knowing who that follow-on purchaser might be is risk enough to, to really give our proposal some serious thought. Sometimes people ask me, well, why was this interesting to you? And, and what I've learned in Danville that I really love, it's like, I think North Danville is an unbelievable community. It's just awesome. And the River District is great. I love this intersection up here and I think School Field is awesome. So to me, it's like the string of pearls. I mean, they're all on the same street. It's amazing to me. And this is at this real important moment where Holbrook Ross, you know, sort of meets Main Street and Old West End and Millionaire's Row and Sutherland. I think Crema and Vine's one of the neatest. I don't know if you have, you all had to approve that or whatever, but thank heavens you did. It's added a lot, a whole lot to that neighborhood. In fact, my controller at my office said, what is this Crema and Vine and why are you spending so much money there? So anyway, this is not great, but let me tell you what is great. Midtown Market is amazing. That is just one of the coolest little spots in the state of Virginia. So we're real excited about doing whatever we can to be supportive of them. And I like these mid-century buildings and I like the idea of being able to take Chambers Street and make it quieter. Right now, this is dark and dangerous. We've had in this, in this corner right here, you know, we have vagrants breaking there and, you know, we keep it secure as best we can, but when something's just a big, dark hole like that, it becomes a safety problem. And that is, that is not going to get better. And so the reality is, is one way or the other, the Doctors' Buildings are going to be redeveloped. So it's not whether, it's who and what. And so the who, you obviously want, you know, people with a track record that are reliable, that you feel like are good partners. And I'm just arguing that the what, the idea of having more hospitality is accretive to the community in, in all the ways I mentioned. So we took this, which is not great. It's real bad, actually. So, we took this, which is not great, it's real bad, actually, and began to think of it in this way. And I'm just going to step over here, if that's okay, because I don't want Alice to do it. Yeah, it's easy, obviously. So, what we wanted to do, if the Department of Historic Resources will let us, I think it'd be really neat to close off that semicircular entry, and quiet Chambers Street for these folks here, create, you know, just some more green spaces and shit. Then, we wanted to remove some of that parking. There's just too much parking. It's just awful. I mean, I don't know. When you live here, you know, if you want to go up there and just walk around and look at it, it's just terrible. And sometimes, it's, basically, in Roanoke, when I'm around something, I forget that the way it looks, because I've been around it for so long. But when you really look at it, it's pretty bad. So, we wanted to add some trees. This is, there is no sidewalk on the left side. It's real weird. It just sort of, it's just asphalt. And so, Chambers Street ought to be this real beautiful little street. The left side, I want like a rec set, is basically what I'm saying. So, turned out in terms of parking efficiency, we could put that little lawn in the center, and just return some of the asphalt to Brax, just to make it better. We're still happy, as can be, to not only share parking, allow parking for Midtown. But I thought it'd be fun if we put some, you know, some umbrellas, and you can go get your chickens out, or whatever you're into, and just grab a spot and sit down. And, you know, that's basically it. You would then move the entryway to the, to the Holbrook side, which is perfect, you know. It's like Zuckawatt, the Winston Club, and it gets it out of the way of all this, and just makes a lot of sense. And then, those folks can run off and do whatever they want with their cars. And so, that's essentially, essentially the idea. We've talked about safety. We've talked about traffic. We've talked about vitality. So, for example, we had somebody call up and say, "Hey, we're thinking that it might be interesting to put a cancer treatment facility in there." Well, that might be okay. I mean, I don't know. So, let's call it an office use. The problem, or let me say it this way, the beauty of residential is that the lights are on at night. And the idea of driving up past this building, and looking down Chambers Street, and seeing historically sensitive downlit light, lit parking lots, accent lighting on the building, all that sort of stuff adds a sense of vitality. And people are walking out, and they're like, "This place is great." And they go across to Sutherland, or they jump on the trolley, and they run down to Carrington, or Ballot. It's that activity and that oxygenation that we're really going for. We've talked about hospitality. We've talked about benefiting stakeholders, including business visitors, by the way. Because I got to say, I don't know how Telly would respond to this, but if you've got folks in from out of town, and you're showing them this unbelievable city, and then they go out to the Hampton Inn, or whatever, that's not what we're at. I tell you, that's definitely not what they're after. It's not what we're after, in terms of what we want for our guests, whether they're business visitors or family. We talked about economics, aesthetics, and engagement with the community. So, I want to turn it over to the folks. Well, I guess, there are many folks here that are opposed to it, and their opposition is understandable. As a lawyer, you know, reasonable people can disagree, and I certainly understand that. But what I would ask you to do is to make your evaluation and your analysis in terms of who you think the best person or kinds of people are, and what the best ideas, and what's best for the most people. Old West End neighborhood, city of Danville, et cetera. So, thank you for your time. Are there any questions before I turn it over? Yes?
Did I hear you say you have already met with residents of the area?
Yes, yes, yes. Several times, yeah. Or at least two or three times, yeah.
We like it when people get together and talk about their problems, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We had a lot of fun. I mean, they're good folks. And, you know, as I said, you know, it's real funny. Sometimes people will try to convince each other. And it's okay to disagree. I mean, I know that somebody's adamantly opposed us and just going to say, "Ed, you know what? You did. You just convinced me." But anyway, we've had a good time.
Also, do you anticipate having any dining in this hotel, or not?
So, there's several reasons. I prefer for hospitality. We, the municipality in Salem invited us in specifically to do, to enliven Main Street. And so, we needed food and beverage to do that. I prefer not to do it, because what I prefer is for our hospitality ideas to serve existing food and beverage operators as customers, and to support them. That's sort of, that's why the B, the B may have a rooftop bar. That would be a neat thing. But generally, and it would, but generally speaking, like, what I'd love for the Doctors' Buildings is for them to become great Cremen Vine folks. I also am not crazy about creating what's called wet garbage. So, I'm fastidious that the buildings are clean, and safe, and very well tended to. And when you pull food and beverage into the envelope of a building, it enhances the risk of, like, of insects, and vermin, and stuff like that, which I would just like to avoid.
Thank you.
What other projects in Danville are you involved with?
Sure. So, we've made a long-term, multi-year, permanent commitment to be here. And for my work, it takes a certain amount of scale to do that, because we'll create, I mean, we'll create a ton, a ton of jobs for five years or so in construction over these projects, but five full, full-time. And so, we've got the B downtown. We'd like to come do this building next. And so, timeline matters to you all. We would be aspiring to, I mean, we'd like to be working on it right now. If this is not something y'all are interested in, we would probably just be at a sort of juncture about selling. But if we're able to go forward, I think this would probably open, I would say, early spring, March of twenty-one, is what it would take. And that's the other thing that's important. We have financing in place. So, this is not, I mean, if you guys give us the green light, you know, we're ready to roll. But that's the basic idea. And then, I will say, I think School Field's real special. And I got turned on to it through Ena Dixon, who's done an incredible amount of historic research up there, and the School Field Museum, and Dana Barry Reagan, and all these people did this heroic effort around the School Field Museum. I like that front building a lot. So, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to work up there. So, it's, the way it is right now, is it's, if things go well, it's five years of work. If things go really well, it's seven to ten, I would say, if that's helpful.
Mr. Jones, do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Does your property line go all the way up to the wall of Midtown?
What it has is, it has an eight-foot easement. They have an eight-foot easement to, for access. I think probably, historically, it was to get to the back of the building, is my guess. So, what we would be doing is just pulling, you know, we can build whatever we want on it. We just got to make, we just got, they just have to have access. So, we wanted to build this real nice little terrace space, and landscape it, and...
So, there'd be no parking for Midtown on the side?
Oh, yeah.
Except next to the cemetery?
Well, that's their parking lot.
Yes.
Oh, that's theirs, yeah.
How about on our side?
So, so, Midtown actually has a pretty awesome parking lot, really, here. And then, their parking, you know, all in here now, and as far as I'm concerned, it's still doing it.
Okay.
I mean, we're, I'm a big fan of that place. And so, I think it's not only a real important thing to Danville, I think it's one of the little crown jewels in Old West End, for sure. So, I see them as something to build a place around. So, that's why we wanted to do this whole terrace.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you a whole lot for sharing that. Was anyone else wishing to speak for the project? Yes, come on.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Del Giorno. I live at eight forty Main Street, but I also own and operate Cremen Vine, which is one zero zero nine Main Street, catty-corner across from this project. I guess I'll start by saying it's probably a no-brainer, from a business standpoint, that we would support this project. The potential forty-plus customers that I could have every single day certainly excites us, and we welcome with open arms. But I wanted to speak as a resident as well, because I live two blocks away. We've lived and traveled all over the world. I've seen these kind of neighborhoods, and I've seen these kind of projects. And I've gotten to know Ed the last year. The quality of work that he does for this project, I think, would really enrich the Old West End neighborhood, while serving to increase our property values. The fact that we now have a very unique neighborhood, where you could live, you could walk to a museum, art galleries, Midtown Market, a coffee shop, wine bar, churches. Add into that a boutique hotel of this quality, really gives the Old West End something that, I don't know, any of the neighborhoods in Virginia that really have something this special, which would certainly make it more attractive to people who are looking to move here from out of state or out of the country. So, I just wanted to voice that, and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Tiffany Franks, president of Averit University. And it is in that role that I come to speak about how this project could be of, I think, great value and benefit to Averit. You know, we serve approximately a thousand traditional students, and another six hundred online learners. We have parents and family members who frequent our campus regularly, and then we have our alumni. If we just take our traditional students, their parents and families are often, they'll come multiple times throughout the year. Certainly, heavy times are at the beginning of the academic year, at the end of an academic year, often in between, in the middle of the semester. This provides a wonderful opportunity for them, close to our campus. We have well over fifteen hundred prospective students and families visit at least once a year, as they're looking at Averit, as they're exploring us as their college of choice. Being able to have those prospective students and their families this close, or at least provide them with another option, is very beneficial. Our online learners, which literally were, you know, around six hundred of those, we now are building into our curriculum a requirement that they will come to campus at least once during their academic program. So, that means that people from all across Virginia, and even beyond the walls of the Commonwealth, will be coming to campus. We need to be able to provide them with very attractive options for housing. So, that is also attractive. Then, of course, you know, selfishly, on behalf of Averit, every day, we're in the business of recruiting very talented faculty and staff. And this sort of option, again, would be very attractive and value-added. So, I speak on behalf of all the constituents that we serve, and feel that Ed's vision only serves to lift the area that surrounds our campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Once again, Director of Economic Development for the city of Danville. Economic Development Office is in support of this project for numerous reasons, many of which have already been stated. But I think it's very important to, particularly to Silver Hill and Averit University, giving events like homecoming, open houses. Additionally, people who may be visiting loved ones in the hospital, family and friends, who need an extended stay while their loved one may be receiving treatment at the hospital. Traveling physicians, traveling nurses, professors who may be in residence for a period of time. We think this fulfills a need for many of those uses. The fact that it's in walkable distance to Averit and to the hospital as well, we think is a value-add, encouraging pedestrian activity. And then, too, I think the overarching sentiment that our office feels is that this provides us an opportunity for visitors to be introduced to Danville in a much different way than they can be today. There is a, you know, no disrespect to Courtyard, or to Holiday Inn, or to Hampton Inn, but there's one in every city, major city in U.S. We think this particular opportunity allows Danville to showcase its history, some of the culture, some of the unique qualities of the community, and leave an impression on that visitor that makes them want to come back and say, "I'd like to consider investing there. I'd like to maybe move there. I'd like to encourage my friends and family to come visit there." So, with that being said, I will just reiterate that the Economic Development Office is in support of this, and we would ask for the Planning Commission to support this, as well as the SUP permit that's been applied for.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in favor, first of all?
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Bryce Baughman. I live at ten twelve Main Street, and I'm the chairperson of Friends of the Old West End. As you, many of you already know, the Friends of the Old West End have, our goal is to help bring new and diverse homeowners, businesses, and residents to the neighborhood. The past several years, we worked with you all to sell existing properties in the neighborhood, and we welcome new and creative uses for existing properties in the neighborhood. We were delighted when Cremen Vine came to the neighborhood, because we looked at that as a plus for the neighborhood. You know, a rising tide. I think John Kennedy said, "A rising tide lifts all boats." And we looked at it as to be a plus in the neighborhood. And we do agree that the Doctors' Building needs to be put to a good productive use. And Ed Walker paints a very compelling picture of what that could look like. However, we're not necessarily opposed to the development of the Doctors' Building into a boutique hotel. Our concern is more around the zoning change that would impact the entire city, allowing hotels in any TOC-zoned neighborhood. I think that's, the definition of hotel as it currently stands is very broad and very encompassing. And I think Bryce read that. I won't reiterate everything that he said, but it could include a hotel, an inn, an automobile court, motel, motor lodge, tourist cabin, and the list goes on. And since this does impact more than the Old West End, I think we need to consider that this could have far-reaching impacts across the city. Not every developer would approach this with the same vision and execution that Mr. Walker intends to. We think that definition is too broad, and could lead to unintended consequences. Currently, the way the code is written, and the proposed change, doesn't allow any limit to the number and size of units allowed in a residential neighborhood, or a TOC neighborhood. And it doesn't even give any definition as to the type of establishment. It only says, basically, that it rents rooms for a fee. However, boutique hotels are very quickly gaining in popularity. Mr. Walker himself referred to this establishment that he's proposing as a boutique hotel. Although there is no definition that, like he said, home, or office, or whatever, they do have some commonality, in that they're different from chain hotels or typical hotels. But there are some similar characteristics for boutique hotels. They tend to be small, intimate establishments. They tend to be upscale. They have upscale furnishings. They have a unique architecture and design. They have character. They tend to be located in hip urban areas, up-and-coming locations. And they do tend to recognize the culture and the history of the area where they're located. Many of the things that Mr. Walker mentioned in his design. So, our proposal is to define what type of hotels would be permitted in TOC neighborhoods. Boutique hotels, we think, could be allowed by a special permit, but I think we need to really clearly define what a boutique hotel is, so that we don't end up with something that we don't want next to somebody's home. So, we've put together just a proposal. So we've put together just a proposal. So what we've put together is just a proposed wording change to the city code that would satisfy and protect the residents of the city in general, but still allow this project to move through. So our proposed definition would be to allow by special permit boutique hotels in T.O.C. neighborhoods defined as a small resort-type destination that provides a unique setting with upscale accommodations, typically between six to thirty-five suites that are rented on a daily basis for a short-term period for monetary compensation. Accommodations shall provide at a minimum separate sitting and sleeping areas, may include kitchens or kitchenettes and laundry facilities. The building shall be used as, the building shall not be used as a homeless shelter, transitional living shelter, or for post-release housing. Food shall not be prepared, and no more than fifteen percent of the units shall be used for longer-term stays such as apartment hotels. In addition, we would request that the boutique hotel be subject to all current regulations in T.O.C. neighborhoods, and where applicable, the Old West End Design Guidelines approved by the Planning Commission would be followed. Questions?
One thing I was just going to say, you did understand that the, because of those very things you were concerned about, the reason that it's going into T.O.C. not by right but by special use permit is to be able to look at each project individually as it comes before us. You know, it may or may not have thirty-five suites, or everything can be a little bit different and needs to be tweaked. That's the reason that it would be by special use permit, so that we could address these very issues.
Yeah, absolutely. But our feeling was that because every developer is different, and this impacts more than just the Old West End, that our feeling is that we need to have some guidelines in place. Obviously, anything, because this would be by special use, any development would have to be approved.
Sure.
But the current definition of a hotel is too generic.
Okay.
And there's a reason why the city doesn't currently allow hotels in T.O.C.-zoned neighborhoods.
All right. Any questions for her while she's up for you guys?
I'm sorry, I didn't give you her name.
Frances Baughman.
Frances.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to add something to that that hasn't already been said?
Yes, please. My name's Paul Lepi. I live on Main Street in the Old West End, five doors from the proposed project, and very close to the Doctor's Building in what is primarily a residential area and a historic one at that. I came to tell you about a visit I made to one of Mr. Walker's properties last weekend, not this past weekend, but about ten days ago. He showed you a picture of it, the sale of motor lofts, and I have to tell you that it was a very pleasant experience. I was very, very impressed with the property. I enjoyed my time there, and I was specifically impressed with what Mr. Walker has done to preserve the history of the building. I love the photos of the building when it was a car dealership lining the hallways. I think he did an excellent job in terms of fit and finish. But I agree with Mrs. Baughman's notions that we need to bind Mr. Walker to his commitment to provide us with that kind of facility. Therefore, I support the notion there ought to be a specific definition of boutique hotel, and let's have Mr. Walker be sure to do exactly what he's promised us. I think he's a good guy. I encourage you to approve his proposal with those limitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Stephen Wilson, live on Main Street, 918 Main. And I had, just wanted to say, I, of course, Ed Walker gives a wonderful pitch, and it looks like if it works out, that would actually be wonderful. I just wanted to, first of all, tell you that my background, since I think I was here a month or so ago, to remind you that I was the founder of Luna down on Bridge Street. I know something about the economic development of Danville, lived on the Old West End, right near there. And then I was trying to find out exactly if it was, but anyway, I presented the, actually Fran Baughman, and I went to the launch place. We came, the Exxon Station on that corner, which became Cremen Vine, was, we worked with the launch place to come up with a plan for a coffee shop or something, presented it, I presented to City Council December of that year, and wonderfully Earl called to say the I.D.A. had an option on the building, and it became pretty much our plan. And what is missing from this conversation is not the wonderful plan, but the fact that this committee perhaps is accidentally, doesn't have a process for communicating with residents. And so after something happened around here that we talked about before, we're really trying to help with communication from the city to residents, and it turns out that City Council is actually very excited about this idea, and I'm hoping that you all could actually try to help us communicate with planning and zoning and all that stuff. Because what is concerned with everyone in the city, which was not given this description of what a hotel is, but it's my understanding you're changing citywide zoning for T.O.C. so that anyone in the city can know this, and I haven't, there are people in the city have never heard this. So the best thing to do would be to inform everyone impacted on something before it becomes a fact and people, you know, somehow get unhappy about it. So actually, I think this, you know, there's a potential here for a wonderful outcome, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Stefan Janak. I live at 968 Main Street. I have the biggest frontage with the Doctor's Office. My property runs from Maine all the way back, the entire length of Chambers Street. Ed might have met some of the residents, but he hasn't taken the opportunity to come meet me, is his biggest name. I am a physician here in town. I've owned that property for twelve years. It was built in eighteen seventy-two. I work for Spectrum Medical, so I'm well aware of redevelopment in the downtown area, the River District and Historic District, because I live in the Historic District and work in the River District. Boutique, I'm not going to say that word. It's a motel. It's full of transient people that are coming up. I live in a neighborhood. I have neighbors. That's what I want in my neighborhood. I want to know the people who live next door to me. Now, it was an office building, and for a number of years, it's kind of declined because poor upkeep of the facility. But, you know, at six o'clock, everybody was gone, and it was quiet, and I'm willing to tolerate that, what it's zoned for, but it's not zoned for a hotel. And I don't want to see different people coming at all different hours next door to my resident. He showed us two beautiful properties, and I thought they were both beautiful, but perhaps I misunderstood. What he showed us was apartments. I think that's what they were. Were they not?
Yeah, I was just going to let you finish.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Just make your comments to us, and then we'll hang back.
In other words, those were not the rooms that are going to be here, okay? There's no guarantee what he says he's going to do. There's a place for a boutique hotel, and that's in the River District in downtown. I don't think that both the facilities he showed showed that there's residential buildings next to the property. So in my opinion, this is not beneficial to the neighborhood. I think this belongs somewhere else, and I think the zoning shouldn't be changed, and I don't think there should be a special permit issued for this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Just wanted to respond to this gentleman. I will say, I think it's terribly unfortunate in these situations when that tone becomes the tone of the discussion, honestly. That's not how great small cities are, made or remade. In that vein, I want to thank Fran and Paul for the exact opposite, which is a very collegial, open-minded conversation and dialogue, because we all want the same thing. Contrary to his assumption, I did make it clear to everybody in the Old West End that I would jump at the chance. I'm sure I don't strike you as a person that's going to ignore key stakeholders. It's just not the way I am. And I told several folks in the Old West End, it's in emails, I want to talk to anybody I can that's got a problem with it. And so I've made myself available. We had an event at the, at Cremen Vine. I've just been happy to talk with anybody about it. And I understand his concern. His concern makes sense. It makes sense. They also chose to buy on a street that is somewhat busy, but I don't fault him for being concerned about it or for his request either. I think the tone is really unfortunate and unhelpful. The photographs that you saw, we have a number of apartments, and we have a number of hotel rooms, and they are functionally the same. If we have a furnished, and if you want me to, I can scroll back and show you, but for example, if Corillian has a physician, and he's going to come and stay for a week, sometimes what they would prefer to do is have a furnished apartment rather than a hotel. So it's just, it's different, but functional, but they, in terms of fit and finish and that sort of stuff, they are at the same level, if that's responsive.
Let me ask you something. While you're still up here and with staff, just to try to address that question before about terminology of a boutique motel, is that just not in there somewhere? What's your thoughts on what's been said?
Regarding boutique hotel, the word boutique is incredibly subjective. The term boutique hotel is incredibly subjective. It's, we've heard the idea of defining it in terms of zoning and legality. We're not sure that's necessary. Some other localities have done that, and their terminology tends to be very imprecise and subjective. What they offer is probably actually the most precise definition I've seen for boutique hotel, but everything that differentiates that, their proposed definition from a hotel, would very easily be implemented into the conditions.
Right.
Thus, being able to do it by special use permit.
Well, that's what I was thinking. And I didn't know if there's anything as you wanted to add to that.
To be, it's sort of outside of my area of expertise, to be honest with you. I mean, I think the point that Fran makes is a really good one. I understand, I think the point that Paul makes is a good one, and I'm just not a planner or a policy person, so I can't really speak to it.
Well, I mean, I know, based on the sketch you've got, you're not, and the building itself, it's not going to be a super eight, or it can't be, because of the way the building is. You're going to change, you're going to use the existing building and remodel it. You're not turning it down and building something else. You're remodeling.
To be honest, I mean, you know, when I sit around and think about, so, the money that I need to take care of my two teenagers, I earned a long time ago, and I don't do, I do this work because I, literally, when my feet hit the floor, I'm excited about what we're doing and the transformation that we can create. We're always only trying to go from relative weakness to at least relative, if not absolute, strength. So it's just, it's my idea of a great way to spend a day. So my aspiration is to create award-winning projects in design, and to have fun, and to sit over with, you know, at Cremen Vine with Steve Del Giorno at nine o'clock at night, forty-eight months from now, and look across the street and have people happy with it, and Sutherland's happy with it, and it's creating seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars of hospitality tax revenue for the city, and we go, you know, that was, that was good. That was a good decision. So, you know, I mean, that's just where I'm coming from.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, hold on, you got a question?
Sir, hey, one more question. Had you seen her proposal before?
I hadn't, but I heard her read it.
Do you see a big difference from the one that's put up by the staff in this one? I mean, where do you see a big?
I mean, I, the only, I'm not, I think it would be easy to misunderstand me as a credible evaluator of that, and I'm not. I mean, I understand where Fran and Paul are coming from, particularly as it may or may not affect the rest of the city. I think it probably is dealt with on a case-by-case basis. There was some stuff in the boutique hotel thing that, like the resort level, I think that stuff's hard to actually define within the definition, if you know what I mean. So I don't know, I don't really, I don't think I have much to offer except that kind of layman perspective.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Susan Wilson. I live at 918 Main Street. We are just a few doors down, a couple of doors from Steve Janak's house, and many of us on Millionaire's Row, I think there's a joke about it, that it's Millionaire's Row because you go there possibly a millionaire, and you're not by the time you fixed your house. We have all spent a huge amount of money, time, sweat, and tears, and we've been building our homes. And so I personally don't see Steve Janak's comments as anything other than what's going to be right next door to him, and the amount of traffic, et cetera. I, of course, understand that it's a building, it has an owner, it now has a new owner, and it needs to be put to use. And so the question for us is, what is the best use? And what Steve Wilson, my husband, was referring to, I believe, is when we're given a particular piece of property and it's not being used at that time, how could we use it? And a hotel is not, I believe, what any of us in the neighborhood on Millionaire's Row or in the Old West End were envisioning. We had often heard about apartments, and we were considering that that would be good, and that, I believe, is what Mr. Walker talked to the owners of Midtown about. And so his plan seems to be evolving a bit, and he is a really powerful presenter, and the one time that I am aware that the entire community was actually in a position to interact with him was after he told us for the very first time about hospitality and did not actually even use the word hotel, or it was, he talked about boutique hospitality. And so it's very compelling when you hear it, but then when you think about it, it gets a little bit different. And I believe I speak for many of the people in the Old West End that we would be happy to work with him, but we really have not had that much exposure to him. I believe he has spoken to a few people, one-on-one, but we would welcome what Rick Barker and Steve Del Giorno did when they were talking to us. And we were, what we had originally was a filling station, which no longer can service stations alone make money, so it was no longer going to be used for that. And then two different times, two convenience store operators wanted to make a convenience store, possibly gas station with selling cigarettes and whatever, and all of us thought we really don't want that down the block from us. So now we thought apartments, and yes, if there were an apartment building there, we might actually have a couple more cars than for a hotel. However, someone who lives in an apartment actually becomes a resident of the neighborhood and becomes a neighbor, and we welcome neighbors, and we welcome different uses, but a hotel and transient is not as desirable. and transient is not as desirable for those of us who actually make our homes there. And it is, in fact, a great place for a hotel because that's a great return on the investment of the person who's owning the hotel. However, that is borrowing a bit from our return on our investment because our homes are no longer really in a neighborhood. It changes the character. So having a hotel there, we've come together as the friends of the Old West End to see how might we accommodate this new owner who seems to be a very good developer? How could we accommodate his needs with ours? And our way of doing that is to say possibly we could define a little bit more closely what might be allowed there. Because if we don't do that, we do not have any control over what would become of that piece of property later. It's like two beautiful historic homes were taken down many years ago to build the doctor's building. Now, because that is there, we can't go back to the original historic homes. So we have to go someplace else. So if we can, if we can define and we can limit what can go there next, that would be very helpful to us, and that is our reason for putting forth these limits on the definition of boutique hospitality. If we don't, and if Mr. Walker gets disappointed with our response as neighbors in the community, he has already said more than once that he doesn't need this. He doesn't need the income from this. He does this for fun, and if he doesn't think it's fun, he doesn't wish to do this. If we go ahead and approve this zoning change, then we have that zoning change, and we no longer have Mr. Walker wanting to develop it. That is a potential situation. I understand that it's his plan now, and we expect it to be good, but we would like the planning staff and the commissioners to help us preserve our neighborhood. And I also wanted to point out that in the sixties, when all the houses were just too large, you couldn't afford to heat them, suddenly all over the country, big, beautiful houses had no buyers, and so they became commercial properties. One after another of these houses that were dentist offices, orthodontist offices, bed and breakfast, many different things, they all have been converted back, not all, almost all have been converted back to private homes. Now, this is a doctor's building, unoccupied for a number of years. How can we make it work for all of us? And so I would like to implore, ask as sincerely and as powerfully as I can that you help us keep our neighborhood a neighborhood, and it's a real community. People walk down the street. People from the hospital walk down the street, and you know the people. Having different people there all the time makes a difference. We want to be able to work with that, and we'd like to ask your help to help us do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Some discussion?
Well, I have just a question for staff. What type signage is permitted in TOC?
That I actually can't remember off the top of my head. It's similar to the rest of the...
I mean, can it be a lighted sign, or does it have to be a subdued sign, or no sign, or...
They're allowed signs. I just can't remember how large the signs can be right there. They're allowed one freestanding sign, and then there's the wall signage as well. Any signs that they get would have to go through the Commission of Architectural Review.
Okay. That's good enough.
I had another question.
Si... If you want, freestanding signs allowed to be twenty-four square feet for a single occupant building. Two buildings can be thirty-two. Wall mounted signs are half a square foot per linear foot of the building. It is in Historic District, so any signs that would be placed would have to get approval from the Commission of Architectural Review.
Yeah. It would have to be approved. I would be concerned if it was just a big, huge lighted sign, so...
I don't think that would fit in with this project either. I don't think that's what you would do. I was just reading over their proposed, what they like to see as a boutique motel, and it seems like that he's pretty much offering everything that's on that for this project. So if his project goes along as described, it pretty much will be something I think they would be happy with. If for some reason he didn't do it, and we pass the TOC like we're talking about doing, the next guy would still have to come back before us with a special use permit, right? Somebody just couldn't come in and do anything they want to do.
Correct.
So we got them covered that way. Okay. Well, I just wanted to be sure that's said so they understand. Do you got some more questions?
I was just going to make a motion, unless there's more discussion.
Mr. Garrison, anything from you?
Do we need to include part of this as a condition?
Well, I think staff is in this business and has got what we need for now, but I mean, I think just trying to understand what they're saying, I mean, it's basically going to happen.
I think we run into problems if we try to define too specifically.
Exactly. That's right.
The special use permit means that whoever's going to do anything in a TOC
That's right.
like this would have to come to us and bring the project. From what I have seen presented, the project meets this definition.
Right. I think so. Mr. Patrick, any comments? Anybody else? Mr. Bolton?
I move we recommend approval of the requested code amendment.
Okay. Second by Mr. Patrick. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Okay. Next would be the recommend for this particular project with the recommendations that have been submitted. Any motion on that?
Let me find it. I'll do it.
Last page over to the right.
All right. Yeah, I would move that recommend approval of the special use permit application ending in zero two four one with the conditions of staff.
With the conditions that staff has, right? Okay. Have a second? Second. And a roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
And Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Okay. Under other business, was there anything else that you have?
Your recommendations to council for last month were approved last week. Yeah, we do have items for next month, including the work session as brought up earlier.
If you would, send us that emails, the reminder.
Yeah, I can do that.
Because I want to be sure we get that. The minutes from the June tenth meeting, any corrections or changes from anyone? All in favor for them being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they're still carried. Anything else? Anybody from the commissioners? Meeting is adjourned.